Okay, welcome to the Hampden Town Council meeting for October 19th, 2015. This time, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda tonight?
The consent agenda has its...
Discussion?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? The next item is Public Comments. At this time, anybody in the public that would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your chance. Okay?
Unless there's some left who would like to go first, because I think that would be the second.
For public comments?
Yes.
You're it. Just come up.
My name is Kathryn King. I live at 54 Summer Street, and I'm a teacher at Hampden Academy.
Ma'am?
Good evening.
Could you shout over here, because the public cannot hear you.
Yes, of course, yes. My name is Kathryn King. I'm a social studies teacher at Hampden Academy and a resident of 54 Summer Street with my husband and my son and daughter. I'm here this evening to invite the members of the town council to a production of a play called Life in a Jar, which is a staged, a stage performance, a live theater performance, of the efforts of a young Roman Catholic Polish woman named Irina Sendler, who throughout World War II worked to save and succeeded in saving over 2,500 Jewish children from almost certain deaths in the Nazi death camps from the Warsaw ghetto. The play is being staged at Hampden Academy in the Performing Arts Center on November 8th and 9th of this coming month. It is the, it is brought here by the, or through, I guess, the generosity of many donors, including Danny Lafayette, several area synagogues and other faith communities. And I would like, with your indulgence, to read you a brief, the brief press release that has been sent to people who are interested in knowing more about the production. The dramatic production, Life in a Jar: The Story of Irina Sendler, is coming to Hampden Academy on November 8th and 9th. Comprising a seven-member volunteer cast from the state of Kansas, this traveling stage production tells the story of a young Polish social worker, Irina Sendler, who risked her life throughout the Second World War to rescue 2,500 Polish Jewish children from the Nazi death camps. Like Oscar Schindler of the Story of Schindler's List, Irina Sendler was not a Jew. Irina Sendler was a Roman Catholic. Irina Sendler convinced countless Jewish families to relinquish their children to her in order that she might convey them to safe places, lest they die in the ghetto or in the Nazis' death camps. Many of these Jewish parents knew that their best hope, indeed their only hope, that their children would survive Nazi occupation, was to give their children up to Irina Sendler, knowing full well that they almost surely would never see their children again. Social workers were barred by the Nazis from entering the Warsaw ghetto. So disguising herself as a nurse, which allowed her access with food and medicines to the Warsaw ghetto, Sendler smuggled children and babies in boxes, burlap sacks, suitcases, and coffins to save convents, orphanages, and adoptive homes, where the children were given non-Jewish names. Sendler and her network, a group of ten close friends that grew eventually to 25, made lists of the children's real names and put the lists in jars, hence the title of the film, Life in a Jar, and then buried the jars in a friend's garden, so that someday Sendler could unearth the jars and find the children to tell them of their real identities and reunite them with their birth families. In 1943, Irina Sendler was captured by the Nazis and tortured, but she refused to tell her captors who her co-conspirators were, or the location of the burial sites of the jars. During one particularly brutal torture session, Irina Schindler's feet and legs were broken by the Nazis, but she refused, she refused to reveal the information that would lead the Nazis to the children's identities. When she, when she awoke after having lost consciousness during the torture session, a Gestapo officer told her that he had accepted a bribe from her comrades to help her escape. The officer then added her name to a list of prisoners that had been executed, and Sendler went into hiding, excuse me, but continued her rescue efforts. When the war ended, Irina Sendler unearthed the jars and began trying to return the children to their families. For the vast majority of the children, there were no families left alive. Many of the children were adopted by Polish families; some were sent to Israel. Why did Irina Sendler endure what she endured? Why did she do what she did? In her words, "If you see a man drowning, you are obligated to try to save him," even, she said, "if you are not able yourself to swim." Her story was unearthed in 1999 during a group of Kansas high school students work on a year-long National History Days project. It has been retold in a bestselling book and in a Hallmark, Hall of Fame television motion picture. Irina Sendler died in 2008. The production of this Kansas troupe, Life in a Jar, will be staged on November 8th at the Performing Arts Center at Hampden Academy, in performances at 1:00 and at 5:00 PM. There is no charge for the, for admission to the event, but donations after the performance will be accepted to benefit the Life in a Jar Foundation, which seeks to spread the story of Irina Sendler's remarkable life and her remarkable and extraordinarily courageous and selfless accomplishments. I simply wanted this evening to make you aware that this performance is being staged at the high school where I teach and to invite you to attend this event and join my husband and me and my colleagues and students and the general community, as members of the community that hosts this play, to learn more about Irina Sendler's life and to watch this, this play that has been written to celebrate and commemorate what she did. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
If I may, Kathryn, thank you, thank you from the council and the public.
You're very welcome. Thank you for letting me speak.
You can be sure many of us will be there.
I'll look forward to it. Thank you so much.
And thanks to Danny Lafayette, too.
Yes, yes, he, the troupe, there were many people who, I'm sorry, there were many people who generously reached out to this. Danny Lafayette has offered free room at the White House motel to house the players. To mention a couple of others, the Friar's Bakehouse in Bangor has offered to feed, to give dinner to the, to the players on Sunday evening after the performance, to give them food and drink, to make sure that they have plenty to eat, full tummies, before they go home and go back to bed. The, there have just been, the area synagogues and other churches, the Roman Catholic churches in the area, other churches in the area have donated money and letters of support and have, and there will be a playbill and other posters at the Hampden Academy, in the Hampden Academy lobby, to acknowledge the different contributions by individuals and by area institutions. It's a really remarkable opportunity, I think, to see, first of all, to see the people from the state who, who generated this piece of work, and also to learn one more piece of ways in which ordinary people did truly extraordinary things in an extraordinary time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope to see many of you there.
The next item on our agenda tonight is under nominations. Walter Couples', appointment to the Board of Appeals, Planning and Development Committee Recommendation, Counselor Shakespeare.
Yes, we had a appointment approval recommendation for the appointment of Board of Appeals from the Planning and Development Committee for Walter Couples. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is Courtney O'Donnell, Appointment to Board of Appeals, Planning and Development Committee Recommendation, Counselor Shakespeare.
We also had a discussion about Courtney O'Donnell for appointment to the Board of Appeals. The recommendation was to appoint her, and I make that motion from the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Next item under unfinished business, Municipal Review Committee Board of Directors' election, the nomination of Town Manager Angus Jennings. At a prior meeting, we had a discussion of who to nominate. The council suggested that we nominate Angus Jennings, the Town Manager, to be on that board. Tonight, we're gonna make it official, hopefully. Is there any public comment? Discussion? Motion?
Make a motion that we nominate, approve nomination of Angus Jennings, Town Manager of Hampden, to the Municipal Review Committee Board.
Second.
Good timing.
We're right on.
Any discussion?
I just want to add, I'm glad this is happening. I think, you know, there are so many ways this is gonna be affecting the town that we need to be at that table, so I'm glad it's happening.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the next item is the Service Fees, 2015-16 Finance Committee Recommendation. We brought that up tonight, the Finance Committee. We have six properties on the list that are tax exempt, but they don't pay taxes, but they will pay a user's fee. Public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the service fees for 2015 and 2016.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is License Plate Issuance Policy. As you should know, we have started the wheels turning to issue license plates here at the town office in Hampden. The question brought up was, we're starting November 2nd. The office will be open from 8:00 to 4:30 to issue plates. It will be open at its normal time, but from 8:00 to 4:30, they're gonna issue plates. The reason for that being that if they run into some difficulties and they need to contact the state to find out exactly what they need to do, then the state office will be open. It was brought up at Finance to do that on a 90-day basis, and then to check with the employees in the town office to see how things are going and how they feel comfortable with the procedure. And so, we had the Finance recommended that we do that on a 90-day trial basis for now. Public comment? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the License Plate Issuance Policy, as the mayor just specified.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Marble?
Just note that this issue was first brought forth by other counselors, including Counselor Wild and maybe McAvoy. I honestly don't remember. But I think it speaks well, that this was maybe a little slow in coming for some folks, but it took the course it should have taken, in my opinion, and we got here to a reasonable stance and will start doing it, so I'm glad it's happening.
Thank you. Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this 90-day review thing is only for process purposes. It doesn't mean that there's any danger of this thing going away in 90 days. You know, the process might change a little bit, but that's it. But it's, hopefully it's here for good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item is Catch Basin Cleaning, the Funding Proposal, Finance Committee Recommendation. Earlier tonight, that was brought up at Finance. It's part of our stormwater rules and regulations now that we have to go by. We have to monitor the catch basins in town as far as the amount of debris in them and where that goes. We have to store that for a while before we can dispose of it. So, we need a base guideline to start from, so at this point, we need to clean all 54 catch basins, so we have a base to find out which ones are our problem catch basins and which ones are not. The money from the Saturday bus service that we voted in last year, went through the budget, and then we did away with Saturday's bus service. There was an overrun of roughly $30,000, so it was a recommendation to use up to $10,000 out of that money to do catch basin cleaning, to get us on board with the stormwater program. Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Well, we're gonna have a motion that we basically move the $10,000 from, it was from the bus, the bus, not bus reserve, right?
No, no, it's the bus.
From the bus, period, in the budget, to catch basin cleaning, to apply for that.
A second.
Discussion? Counselor Marble?
Yeah, I just want to say to the public, there may be some who react to this saying, well, they, they eliminated the Saturday bus so they could fund sewers. I don't think it's as simple as saying the Saturday money is what's going into this necessary step under DEP. There were also additional costs, as explained to us earlier, in terms of the being billed from the bus system and what we're actually paying. But at the same time, I want to say, this is a necessary step. It's an important step, and I think both the Town Manager and the Director of Public Works are doing the right thing, so I'm supporting this clearly.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Under New Business, Proposed Amendments to Fees Ordnance. That was brought up at Finance Committee tonight. We have several areas, the sewer fee structure that we need to look into, so that's gonna be referred to the Infrastructure Committee meeting. Recreational fees, there were some questions on some of those fees, and those will be turned over to the Services Committee. So at this time, the fees ordinance is on hold until those committees meet and determine those user fees. Any public comment? Okay, the next item is the VFW Bingo and Games of Chance License Renewal. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the council approves the VFW Bingo and Games of Chance License Renewal.
Discussion?
As a member of VFW, I'm gonna remove myself from the vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is the Pizza Gourmet Application for Renewal of Liquor License. Public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
And I'll make a motion that we approve the application for the renewal of the liquor license for the Pizza Gourmet.
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is Request to Use Streets and Roads Reserve Funds for Replacement of the School Sign on Route 202. That was brought up at the Finance Committee meeting tonight. The flashing yellow light out front here by 202 had to be fixed. The bill was $761.02. That'll, Infrastructure brought that to us. That'll come under the Roads and Reserve. The school has agreed to pay half of that bill at $380.01. But the motion before you is to take the $761.02 out of reserve to pay it right now. Public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I move authorization of $761.02 from the Streets and Roads Reserve Funds for Replacement of that blinking light on 202.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
On principle.
Same thing.
Okay. The next item is Request to Use Computer Reserve Funds for Replacement of Public Safety Service Server. Kyle Severance, the IT guy, was here tonight presenting to us that the town server is getting weak, that goes down, and public safety's tied up for over a half an hour while he tries to get that up and going. That server serves 17 workstations and has 32 different users. The reserve money has been set aside $9,000. They said $1,800 a year for five years for that replacement. That money is there. He had a bid come back for $8,885 to complete the job. So it was a recommendation from Finance to accept that bid, to come out of computer reserve funds. Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Reserve funds $8,885 used to upgrade the public safety server.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Marble?
I just want the public to know it was the consensus of council and committee meeting that our IT staff, Kyle, did an excellent job with this, and that I think it'll serve public safety well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The next item up is Cancel or Reschedule the November 2nd Council Meeting. Manager Jennings?
As the council is aware, we've got an election coming up on November 3rd. My understanding is that in prior years, there's been, there have not been council meetings held on the evening before the election, in part because the town clerk and our support staff are significantly occupied with other tasks, that I'm sure she can speak to in detail. So, wanted to put this before the council, get your guidance on whether to reschedule or to cancel that meeting.
Counselor Shakespeare? On what date would it be rescheduled? On the 9th?
That, that would be up to the council. Right now, we've got one scheduled for the 16th, so whether you want to have back-to-back meetings or just have a single meeting in November.
Because the 9th is also the play at the school, although it's on Sunday also, at the 8th.
I'm sorry, this is out of word, but just to allay your concerns about having the production on the 9th, it's during the school day, it's for public school students only. So it should, I'm sorry, interrupt, but it should interfere in all of the, which is the decisions that are going on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anything of urgent, that's urgent, that's pending, that you see or foresee?
Denise and I talked that over this afternoon. We don't, there's nothing on our radar that, that can't wait till the 16th.
I would make a motion that we cancel the meeting scheduled for November 2nd rather than reschedule.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So the meeting for November 2nd will be canceled. We will meet November 16th. Committee Reports. Services Committee, Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor. The last Services Committee meeting was canceled. We had absolutely nothing of any, you know, anything of any concern to deal with. The next one is on the 9th of November, and I'm hoping that some of these fees to be reconsidered will be on there. Other than that, I'm just not aware of anything else at this point.
We're going to discuss the bus on the 9th.
The services and the bus, or... And you're all welcome to attend. Thank you.
Infrastructure Committee, Counselor Marble?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. We have not had a meeting since the last council meeting. The next infrastructure meeting will be on Monday night, the 26th, at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor Shakespeare?
The last meeting we had was on October the 7th, and we discussed the Marina sign again, and our Economic Development Director updated the committee on his discussion with the owner of Hamlin Marina, Dan Higgins, in regard to a shared expense and the design of a new sign at the Marina, possibly a digital reader-type sign. Also discussed codification, the reports that the material, which is rather lengthy, needs to be assembled and submitted to consultants. The outstanding issue pertains to questions of whether the various fines associated with the ordinances are adequate as currently adopted. We also had a discussion about RSU 22 in the Building Committee meeting. Our Town Manager, Angus Jennings, and the Code Enforcement, yeah, Economic Development Director, reported to the committee on their attendance at a recent committee meeting. They reported that they're experiencing some traffic-related issues, which are being addressed in cooperation with WBRC Design Professionals. The discussion, exploration of options, are in the early planning stages. And also, we had a discussion about a draft of private road ordinance. Our Town Manager presented the revised subdivision ordinance incorporating suggested changes in consideration of creating a third option for subdivisions that would allow for developments with private roads. Also, the Planning and Development Meeting for this Wednesday is canceled, so there will be no meeting on Wednesday evening.
Thank you. Non-Finance Committee, tonight, basically you've heard everything that we discussed tonight in Finance, we've gone through here tonight at the council meeting. The only other thing that I would like to let the public know, that the bids and results from all the communication in the TV, stuff we've been working on, has been approved. It's on the way. The Hampden Electric is gonna do the electricals, so some of the stuff that you have trouble viewing, we're in hopes to get fixed, so that should be taking place soon. And on that, the Managers' Report?
I don't have anything beyond the agenda.
Thank you. Counselor Comments? Counselor Saroyes?
No comment.
Counselor Shakespeare?
One of my comments is, obviously, Christmas is gonna be coming, and when do we usually have the wreaths put up? Probably our town managers aren't aware of that currently. But we'll have to, I think we need to discuss that, maybe in Services, because the flags will have to be taken down. Denise?
You're talking the lights, not the wreath, the lights on the, on the poles.
Yeah, well, all the, yeah, okay, different, some of them are wreaths, I call.
That's usually done after Veterans Day. Usually shortly after.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wild?
I just want to commend the town manager and the department heads and staff that have diligently put together several different bids, several very necessary items that we've had over the last month. Their transparency and hard work is much appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor Marble?
Couple things. Tonight, the council formally accepted the voluntary offer of two residents to step forward and serve on the Board of Appeals. A number of us have made comments at times about the need for folks to get or stay involved, and that's appreciated. I'm also gonna offer a brief editorial about elections that are coming up on Tuesday the 3rd. I'm sure you've seen some of the candidate signs. I hope that folks who are watching are planning to vote, and that they will also talk with Hampden friends and neighbors. If you happen to receive a robocall or three, or a mass mailing, I hope you'll stop and consider whose or what interests may be being served by the originators of those calls and mailings. You might even wonder about the appropriateness of such... You might even wonder about the appropriateness of such things in a local election. We all need a citizenry who is involved and pays attention, and Hamden needs votes that support the town, not attack it. Thank you very much.
Councilor McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor. Shop local, buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. And I would just like to thank Councilor Shakespeare for filling in on my behalf at the last council meeting. I appreciate him filling in for me where I was unable to be here. The other thing I want to let the town know, and I hope they get down there to Dorothea Dix Park and see the park, since we've done some wood thinning and made some trails. I think the public will really like what's been done down there, and I hope they go down and enjoy it. Thank you. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Good night.